On June 21st, 2021, and I'll call to order the Free Town Border Selecting Meeting. Today, we're going to do some things a little bit out of order to try to get people, you know, out of here in a timely fashion. First, I will open up the public hearing for the N-Star Electric Company, DVA Eversource for their request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protective features in under, along, and across from following public ways or ways at the South Main Street Free Town. So it's approximately 3,285 feet of conduit and cable under the road. Do we have anyone here to speak on that? I know Butter is made aware.
I have some questions and concerns about what they do. Is somebody from Eversource coming in?
It's supposed to be.
They're supposed to be.
If you want to hear, I might give you a question.
Yeah, might as well.
All right, Jim Rizendies, and I'm also on the Economic Development Commission. We've been trying to make sure we have sewer and water available in town. And one of our biggest things was to try to get sewer along the line. This main, this electric line that they're showing, they're just drawing a pretty line down the middle of the road. I'm sure they don't know where it's going to go yet, but our sewer main that exists, which is an eight-inch gravity, excuse me, eight-inch force main, it goes from the middle of the road, depending on the bends in the road, over to what would be the west side, South Palm side, meanders back and forth. The sidewalk on the east side is fully contained with water mains, sewer, and the gas main, which is right on the gutter line. The west side has a 16-duck Verizon bank. They've got two major crossings over culverts, which is only 12 inches. When we did the reconstruction of South Main Street, the only way to get the telephone ducts over them culverts was to spray them out. 16, I think there's 16 of them, so they're 16 wide and only one high, because we only had 12 inches of cover over the top of the culverts. So that completely takes away the South Palm main. I'm not sure where they would put their manholes with the sewer being in the road. You've got drainage also in the middle of roads. So I'm not sure how they would get there, but I guess my bigger concern would be getting back to the sewer for either businesses or residents to tie into that force main at some point. If they're putting a big duct bank, somehow we would have to cross to be able to get at that sewer main wherever somebody wants to make the tying. It would work like a water service. You'd go to the force main, you'd make a tap on the main and make a connection. So if they've got this duct bank situated so that we can't get at the sewer, it certainly would be a problem for the town and its people.
Yeah, definitely don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot now with this decision. I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot now with this.
Yeah, and these manholes that they propose to put in are pretty big. And to locate them in the middle of the road isn't going to be, make it any easier. I'm not sure what this service is.
It said improved service when I was reading it. I don't know what that means specifically.
Yeah, I don't know either. That's why I didn't hope.
It's not. It's not me.
So I asked, I asked Gene whether or not this had something to do with the TV located that way.
I kind of assumed that, you know, but it's not. It's just totally, totally the same neck of the woods, just unrelated.
I also talked to Tim Coverella, who works at American now at Bass. Originally, when they went in with that, some people may know that it was a million square feet. They put up less than 100. The second phase is only 100. This could be five, 10 years down the road before they need more power. So they're not going to be the user. My property on South Main Street with the solar, they're not going to be a user anymore. So I'm not sure what this power really is going to feed that's going to benefit the town. Not to mention Chuck said he can speak for the condition of the road, which is in great shape. Having them put a trench down the middle, it can be done. And we would expect them to cold plane grid to grid and put the road back to the condition that it's in today.
So my thought was instead, because he's pretty technical and informed questions, probably better answered with Eversource. I don't want you to have to repeat everything all over again.
I have no problem meeting. I have a lot of knowledge of what's in the street.
I think it's good.
And what we plan on doing in the future for the sewer. And I don't have a problem meeting with anybody at any other time to try to tell them what our concerns are.
I just thought we might wait, give them the 15 minutes in case they show up, move on to the other things in the agenda. If they move up in 15, if they get here in 15 minutes and go over, it's pretty technical. If not, then don't have, we can talk about it anytime after 4:30.
I just don't think it's something that the selectmen should vote on and just give them permission to put this thing in when there's so many open ends.
I agree.
I think you brought up a lot of great points, that things that should be asked and we should get some answers from them before we make any decisions. So I appreciate it.
I just don't want to waste his time.
Yeah, no, I hear you. So we'll have to close the public hearing and then reopen it?
You can.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing for now and move on to some other items.
Then before you close it, I don't know what Chuck wants to speak to, the road conditions.
Just like Jim said, we met out there today. I know Kevin has concerns, water, the power. The road, we did resurface it a few years ago, and the road's in pretty good shape. And it's one of those roads that's so heavily traveled, we need that road to be in A number one shape. You know, stop the shop truck. 98% continue south, the Innovation Way, and that helps alleviate some of the trials and tribulations on, you know, our end of South Main Street. But it's an important road. Obviously, it's main road, and it's only going to get more traffic with the train station, that 55 and older community that's going in. So if, I think one of the stipulations the town needs to put forward is when the project happens, if it happens, that they need to put the road back as is, not, not just trench repair, not cold plane one side of the road or the other side of the road. Like Jim said, curve to curve, put the road back 100%.
Yeah, I agree.
Eversource, if Eversource ruins one of my catch bases, they're going to fix it. You know, I'm not, I have no concerns about that. But like Jim says, the concerns are if they put that in, how are we going to tie into the sewer? How are we going to get to the apartments that are in the road now? It's a bigger plan. We've got to think about what, you know, 10 years down the road. Stuff that we can't think about today, but it's inevitable that that road is only going to get built up even more.
Yep.
If I could just say, Jim, to your question, South Coast Rail is not doing that, but I still haven't asked out to AECOM, the contractor, to see if they are. But ultimately, that's going to be a South Coast Rail facility, or it's going to be an MTA facility.
Facility. They still, it's not a huge energy use.
Not right now.
It's not a main, even that, it's not manufacturing. You know, they're not going to be using it.
No, it's stayed in storage. It's one of the best right now.
Okay, so I think, so I'll have the public hearing go into recess for now. And then if a representative from Eversource does come, then we can direct those questions and ask them, you know, these more detailed questions. Does that make sense to everybody? So moving on, so I think next we are going to go to item six, which is a discussion on purchase of the pole pad system for the town clerk in an amount of $6,500 with CARES Act funds. So Cheryl, could you speak to these a little bit?
My name is Cheryl. Cheryl, I'm the town clerk for the town of Free Town. And in front of you, you have some colored pamphlets in regards to pole pads. This was something that has been in the work with the state of Massachusetts for, going on four years now. They are finally certified, and there are 170 communities within the state that are using these pole pads. This is something that my predecessor Jackie wanted to purchase, but never, we had the funds to go forward with it. We were asking to use the CARES fund, funds in order to purchase four pole pads. Basically, what they are are electronic check-in systems for elections and town meeting. Biggest complaint that we get from our constituents is the long lines at the polls or being at the long precincts. Basically, this will eliminate the paper check-ins, and on average, it would take about 15 seconds per voter to electronically check them in at elections and town meetings. My request is to purchase four pole pads. We have three precincts currently. In the future, if we go up to a fourth, we would have that or as a spare and along with the receipts that print out, again, using them both for elections and town meeting. There is no connection to Wi-Fi, so the cybersecurity element of it is not an issue. Basically, they have Bluetooth synchronized to one another. So if someone checks in that precinct one or it all around, it will show up in precinct three. So there is an annual assessment of maintenance costs that's associated with each of the pole pads. For sure, obviously, it's covered in the actual preliminary cost. And then these would be ready to ship out, but our maintenance agreement wouldn't start until we actually use them, which would be tentatively next town election, which would be April 4th of 2022.
All right, I'd like to note that we're definitely not the first community to go forward with these, which is always a nice thing. New technology, my experience, you never want to be the first.
And that's why Jackie was waiting for a while to have it tested and have the state certify it and just to see the pros and cons. But it's so simple, it's so easy. It's, we can now eliminate the checkout table at elections. So they just check in, and voters can either do it with their IDs or we can actually manually punch them in. So it's going to move those lines quicker and hopefully get people in and out.
Great.
And you save money and we work exactly these election lockers.
Yep. And just, you know, manual input errors too, right? I think we probably help with that.
Right, so right now, when the voters come in after the election, so the office staff have to manually scan all of those books and all of those voter lists, which could, for a presidential election, take up two to three days because they only have one other office staff person and try to conduct daily business at the window in the office. This is literally five minutes upload.
That's great.
And it gives you different reporting. It can actually show you trends on what your busiest voting times were. It'll show you exactly how many voters checked in, so you can compare that to the actual tabular at the ballot box and give an hourly count. So there's a lot of different things that you can do with the pole pads.
Thank you very much. Awesome. Is there any questions here?
I think you explained everything very nicely. I don't really have any questions. Thank you.
So now, do we need a vote on this? All right, so I'll entertain a vote to approve the, sorry guys, approve the purchase of the pole pad system for $6,500 out of CARES Act funds.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So I'm going to digger.
Do we have to do that in person now?
I don't know. Do we?
I don't think we do. This is weird. This is one of our first in-person meetings in a while. I was wondering if we had to.
Weird that we don't have to.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So now, we're going to move over to item seven, which is discussion and vote on the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District's CARES Act grant request in the amount of $1,055,000.
Mr. Matthews, Rick Medeers, Lieutenant Schools, thanks for allowing the agenda to be adjusted accordingly. I appreciate it. Present with me, which I'm going to defer just a moment, is first of all, the Chair of the School Committee, probably doesn't need an introduction here for this group, but just in case, Chief G. Fox is the Chair of the School Committee here, 我现在是学校委员会主席，和我 directors，财务部的凯拉·利兹 好的。
Good afternoon, everyone. As Rick mentioned, my name is Kara Lee, Director of Finance. I'm also a resident of the town of Free Town. It is a pleasure to come before you today to make a request as it relates to COVID CARES federal funding request. We have put forth a request for $155,000 for consideration. It would cover unbudgeted springtime-related costs for remote learning provided to our students, as well as transportation and related costs for two additional buses required to maintain social distancing for the pandemic. The remote learning that was provided from the TDC Connections Academy was a Commonwealth of Massachusetts-approved online school. The remote learning resources were critical to provide flexible choices for our families during the pandemic. We had approximately 150 students participate in the spring semester for this option. The cost for the remote learning was $196,450, for which we were able to utilize about $115,000 from the state coronavirus grant fund, leaving an unfunded balance of $81,575. And then our transportation request of $73,425 includes our spring, basically our January through March and part of April, transportation needs for those two additional buses, plus the cleaning costs needed for those buses. The social distancing measures that we utilized were a result of a requirement from the Commissioner of Education. We believe that these measures were necessary in helping prevent the spread and was illustrated by the fact that we had no COVID-related school closures. In relation to this request, we have made consultations with both the town accountant and the fire chief, who manages this grant. They have expressed to me their support for this request. As a result, we are requesting the board of selectmen consider supporting this request. And if this request was granted, it would align the commitment of CARES funds that Lakeville has provided to us as a school district as compared to the FY '22 budget assessment percentages, which we base on enrollment.
All right, so those numbers you mentioned, are those for, is that Free Town's part of it or is that the overall number?
This would be Free Town's.
Free Town's portion of it. And that percentage is just based on the students enrolled?
That's correct.
Any questions from the board?
No, I mean, for me, it's pretty straightforward what you're asking for. It's stuff that we have to do for student safety, then that's what we have to do.
Kim, do you have any input on this or Chief?
Well, I think that as, as the COVID season is winding down, as far as the town side, I think it'd be worthwhile to grant the school this money. I feel that we have enough in our contingency plan that if it was to fall, based on the bus, it's about a town, we'd be all set money-wise, and I think we're in shape. I think it's kind of winding down.
All right, so the fall doesn't have some, you know, bad news very often.
But we do have a reserve in place, and the funding will run through the end of summer. So certainly, if we do need to utilize funding, if there are rest to use.
All right, great.
How much is in reserve?
Thank you.
How much in the reserve?
So we have a reserve of $86,000 plus another 16, so 9,108.
Now that money's incomprable.
It's a grant, so you don't encumber it.
Wow, are we using it for CARES Act, for the, you probably have to see away or any other activities?
That's all part of the estimate of spending, so that's not even part of the reserve. So, I mean, that's planned to be used.
Yeah, so this reserve is, as it sounds, you know, thing, safety.
Yeah, basically, our reserve is to cover any disallowed costs from FEMA. So specifically, in case costs related to this facility for protocols that were put in place for cleaning, they were actually covered through the capital project, but we have submitted to FEMA to have that reimbursed. If for some reason it's not, we can use the CARES fund. If we don't want to use the CARES fund, it's already paid for through the capital project. So we really are in a very well-protected situation, I think.
All right, great. I'll make motion to grant the request of $155,000.
You want a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you for that, the school department. Thank you, town meeting was successful. Appreciate the continued support. Soon they have access to our facilities. I know we use the middle school too, just moving forward. Free Town Elementary School also has air conditioning and auditorium too.
Very important.
So I'll keep that in mind for future meetings, but certainly our facilities, in addition to the elementary school, the Lakeville campus facilities are available for the town to use at any time. So we appreciate the support.
It was great where we were. It was fantastic.
Yes, thank you. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. So moving on, I'll go to item two. I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 4th, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Moving on. So we have discussion and vote on approval of chip sealing contract from Allstate Construction, effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. I did look at it. I don't know a ton about chip sealing.
Chuck, Kim.
So Chuck, if you'd please enlighten us.
Allstates has done chip sealing in this town 50 years. Same company, probably one of the biggest investors around. Never had an issue. We just did Bell Rock Road two, three weeks ago. They were the low zitter. They were the only better. They're a top-notch company. We've used them at least 50 years, or probably used them for the next 50 years.
Great to hear.
No issues.
Any questions from the board? Anybody? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the chip sealing contract from Allstate Construction, effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Motion made.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now we have the approval of Class 2 used car dealership, deal, sorry, used car dealer license for Elizabeth Borges, DVA, Main Street, gas and auto sales.
So I actually spoke with the Borges about this, and we have everything that we need from them, with the exception of a bond, and the insurance company is waiting for the approval of the bond before they'll issue the bond.
Wait for, wait for our approval before?
Yeah, they are looking for a license number to put on the bond, and the town's saying, we want the bond. So I think if we issue it, we just have to make some sort of stipulation that we have the bond within X amount of days.
Okay. And then, do we have any, any idea how many cars they're looking to have here? Or is this, do they actually currently have?
They currently run the operation, so it's just, it's really just re-licensing.
Yeah, that's right.
So this is, it's up to 20 cars. It's the old sickle station, the Borges. So it's, they have, it's, it's everything, they just stay the same, basically, as to what they currently have. It's more of a license renewal at this point.
All right.
Motion to accept.
So should we, I think Jared had pointed out, like, we need that bond information.
Yeah.
Right, so stipulation that within 30 days.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the Class 2 used car dealers license for Elizabeth Borges, DVA, Main Street Gas and Auto Sales, with the stipulation that they provide the bond information for the town within 30 days.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Angels in America Posting Gold Ribbons for Childhood Cancer Awareness on Town Hall, Police Station, Fire Station, and anywhere else permissible for August 29th through September 5th, 2021. So I think this is obviously a great initiative and absolutely should approve it. I'd read some of the documentation, some really heartbreaking but heartwarming stuff in there. So any other discussion on this?
No.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve Angels in America Posting Gold Ribbons for the Childhood Cancer Awareness on Town Hall, Police Station, Fire Station, and anywhere else permissible from August 29th to September 5th, 2021.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So we've taken care of item six. Moving on to, and seven, so moving on to eight. So this is to vote on the, on awarding a bid for brush chipping and removal at the transfer station to Northeastern Tree Service in the amount of $14,000.
It's, we did the RFP. It's the only thing we cut in.
Okay.
We contacted, I believe we contacted three or four companies.
All right, is this a Chuck thing as well?
No, it's through the transfer station.
Through the transfer station, okay. All right.
This is a routine issue, right? Well, you haven't done it in a while. You didn't do it any last year. So that pile is pretty large. The theory is that we'll spend this $14,000, knock down as much as we can, and then try to work with the highway department and try to get a chipper and try to keep doing some of it ourselves. Now, will we be fully manned down there? Because it's been a while since you had someone down there in COVID. So you're probably looking at over two years' worth of material.
And I guess, Chuck, not to call you out, but I want to ask, do you think that that's reasonable?
No.
The town was very lucky for a lot of years. When Laterno was in business, the company, the land clearing business that was right across from the highway line, they used to go in there annually and chip that pile. Obviously, the pile depends on if we have hurricanes, if we have a lot of storms, you know. Obviously, for those years, the pile's a lot bigger. I think, to what Peter said, I think the last time it was chipped was probably two, maybe three years ago. Lopes out of Taunton went in there and chipped that whole pile. Well, Laterno would basically do it for free, but they would take the chips because they would, they would reprocess the chips and sell it, resell it as mulch. The brushes, the only way you're going to be able to keep up with that brush pile with the chipper that the town currently owns, and certainly going to suggest moving up and have a bigger chipper, is you'd have to have somebody there to chip the brush as you use it. To start pulling chip brush out of a pile that just keeps on getting pushed up is a nightmare. So you almost have to take, have somebody there. As soon as the stuff comes in, somebody has to take it and run it through the chipper. Obviously, I have no problem with bringing our chipper down there and keeping it there if that's what you want to do. But I think it almost, reality is you have to consider it as an annual cost of running the transfer station. Whether it's $50,000 a year or $100,000 a year, whatever that figure is, that should probably be budgeted. It should be known that that's what it's going to cost. I mean, Vicky would be able to chime in better to what she thought the figure would be, but I would almost think that would have to be a figure that has to be in the operating budget.
Yes, sir.
So they already do budget $5,000 per year? I'm not sure that that is adequate, but that already exists within the budget.
You know, the type of chipper, you're looking like a tough grinder to go in there. It's, you know, a massive machine. You're probably, I don't know, $50,000 a year. And again, I'm just talking off the top of my head, not in that business. New England Recycling, which is a subsidiary of Lopes, they could give you an idea, but there's a few companies out there that do it. To do it with the town's little 12-inch chipper, that would be a monumental task.
It'll cost you more than labor. And I, I guess the reason why I was asking for your expertise is because we only received one quote, right? So I have no idea how much it costs to have someone show up with a chipper. And obviously, if someone shows up to my house to chip something, it's a tree. It's not a pile that's twice the size of this police station.
Again, back in the day, when Laterno handled it first, they probably pulled out, they usually use 100-yard trail, they probably had 10 trails, 15 trails. You know, and they come in with these massive machines, you know, that cost a big tub room, it's 30 million and a half dollars. You know, it's big dogs, a big operation, so.
Kim, what did you say the budget was for this?
It's $5,000.
Per year?
Per year.
And how many years has that pile been building up?
I think probably the last time it was, again, it's probably been two, maybe three years.
It's probably close to about three.
So we're basically on budget as we go with this.
Yeah, but, but again, I, if somebody can go in there and chip all the brushes down there for $15,000, I'm going to hire them to do whatever they want to do, if that's.
Isn't that what this bid is?
Yeah, yeah, it is. And that's why I was asking Chuck if it was a good, solid price. I would have asked Mr. Rizendies to, but I didn't want to.
Is that a lump sum price, or is he going in there and working so many days or hours for that?
Based on everything I saw was the one.
I would assume, but.
I can look it up.
If they bid on the pile that's there.
If it's a lump sum and he's going to take the.
If it's a lump sum and he's gonna take the whole pile, no matter what, it's a good deal.
He's booking up to two weeks.
Yeah, he said tough grounding entire pile, Free Town Transfer Station, leaving all mulch material on site.
Yeah.
Yeah, a tough grinder's the way to go, so make, it all makes sense, fourteen thousand's cheap, so.
Yeah, to be precise, I would, I would ask.
Thank you, and I, I was gonna ask you for your expertise, but I figured, I didn't wanna call out a citizen when I had, so, so thank you, I do appreciate it.
Alright, so. Any other questions on this? I think it looks like we should go forward.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, I will entertain a motion to award the bid for brush chipping removal at the transfer station to Northeastern Tree Service Inc. in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
Motion made, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Now, agenda item nine, um, Building Department Transfer Request in the amount of fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. What do we got on this one? Peter, can you speak to this?
I cannot, so it says the, uh.
It's for Tim's wages.
It's Tim's wages.
Okay. Alright.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So, moving on, we have the, um, Cranberry Tri-Fest Bike Race riding through Free Town on August twenty first and twenty second. So, per the email, um, it looks like this is already ran by the chief.
You look at two days in August, you're looking at the twenty first and twenty sec, twenty second. If you look on the last page, it kinda gives you, uh, where the, the actual route they're gonna take. I know the chiefs review that, please do.
Yeah, this is a good sign of, of the world getting back to normal.
Mm-hmm.
You know? So I, I have no issues with it.
No, as long as pol- policing, unfortunately, the fire chief just left, but as long as the police and fire chief are okay with it, I'm okay with it, yeah.
Yeah, last time we did this.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Last time we did this, they went over this and they were fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Cranberry Fest, Cranberry Tri-Fest Bike Racing, uh, riding through Free Town on August twenty first and twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, next we have, um, Discussion and Vote on Chapter Ninety Requests for Engineering Oversight for the Sidewalk Reconstruction in the Amount of Twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. This is a Chuck one.
Yeah, the side, sidewalk, obviously, it's the money that thankfully we got approved at town meeting, uh, this is the engineering for it. GPI, which is the engineer firm that we traditionally used for the last fifteen, sixteen years, um, I first brought them to town probably sixteen years ago to look at the sidewalk, and the, the funding just was never there, never there, never there. Project that probably should have been done forty years ago, it's, uh, that stretches sidewalk pretty poorly.
Yep.
So, we paid for the sidewalk, the engineering, the chapter ninety, and then the town's already approved that, the two fifty-five to do the project. I'm a little concerned with the way the world's running right now, the prices are going crazy, so, um, hopefully the prices will stabilize and we can get the project done for that two fifty-five. If it's slightly over, I, I can pay whatever the, the balance is with chapter ninety, won't have any from the town. Uh, but if the prices are like crazy through the roof, like everything else is, we may hold, hold off on the project, maybe till next spring, till the world market's kinda calmed down a little bit, but, um, right now, we're hoping to get the engineering done, get the sidewalk completed by, uh, September, before school starts up again.
Yeah, so if, if we get the engineering done, done now, say we decide to wait.
Engineering's not gonna.
It's not gonna go, okay, I just wanna make sure there wasn't like a timestamp on it, it's gotta be.
No, no, we, we, we have the money from the town meeting, which is awesome, and like I said, if, if we have two fifty-five and it comes in at two eighty-five, I've got the chapter ninety money to pay the balance, that's not an issue, I'm not worried about that. But if the price of the project comes in at five hundred thousand dollars, just because of the price of the raw materials, the granite curve and the concrete, the asphalt, it's through the roof like everything is right now, we might say, whoa, let's, why do we wanna spend five hundred thousand dollars on two hundred fifty thousand dollar sidewalk? We may, we just may put the brakes on until maybe next spring, next summer. The money will still be there and we'll go from there. I'm more than optimistic that the project will be completed by the.
Alright, great.
Reality is, it's not gonna be designed to the end of the year, or?
No, because they've got, they've got ninety-eight percent of it kinda done.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, so, we, like I said, it's pretty straightforward, it's basically, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're basically replacing what's there. Few changes, nothing major, but basically rip off what's there, putting granite curve and, um, high street, breaking the cement hole. Maybe sidewalk, call it, and a few eighty-eight, uh, lamps, we've got three they did on that stretch, just to make things a little more compliant, so. It's gonna be a win for the town once it, once it goes there.
Alright. Great. So, with that, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to, um, approve the chapter ninety request for engineering oversight on sidewalk construction in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so it looks like nobody from EverSource ever showed up, so with that, I am going to close the public hearing. Do I have to come back from recess before I close it?
Yeah, you have to come back from recess.
So I'll, uh, come back from recess and then I will close the public hearing.
If you close the public hearing, then we can have no further discussion on it.
Right, could, it's, it's, it's not worth having discussion, because it's, if they're not here, and most of your questions are pretty technical, no one can answer, it isn't. So you're gonna really need to have EverSource here, so you have to reschedule for the public hearing, and you can either do it the twenty-eighth or do it the first week.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be closing, you would be closing.
So yes, I think, I think you're right.
Just, just the formality.
No, 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 please, believe me, I need to learn these formalities and every time, every day, every meeting's a new opportunity for me to learn, so.
Trevor, it's gonna be seven thirteen.
Seven thirteen?
Yeah, it's gonna be seven days in a row.
Alright, so yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue the public hearing until, uh, July thirteenth, uh, for the EverSource, uh, request.
Four thirty, I'll come.
We will see, I'm not sure exactly the time yet, but most likely four thirty.
We did reach out to him, we did ask him to come, no.
If, if they want the permit, then they're gonna have to show.
Exactly.
Correct.
I like it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for bringing those very valid questions.
No, that's, I'm very happy, I don't wanna be, you know, the board is blaming for us not being able to do something ten years from now because we just kinda rushed through that, so I think that's very, very useful. Okay, moving on to agenda item twelve, um, we have ambulance payments for May totaling seventy-three, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and nine cents, and write-offs, uh, for May totaling thirty-seven hundred, three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents for a total of eighty-one thousand, ninety-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Any questions? So I'll, uh.
The chief has gone?
Yeah.
No, I just wanted him to explain what this was about, but many people may not understand that our fire department bills for ambulance rights. And, uh, when you bill, the way medical billing works, is you bill, say, a hundred dollars, you only get approved for fifty, and that the other fifty gets written off, and the other piece that people should know.
That happens sometimes, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, as you were saying, George.
Yeah, uh, we bill the insurance companies, and as you know, they're write-offs because they only approve so much of the bill and all of that. And also, we had a contingency period where we do not bill residents for self-pay who have no insurance, that's covered. So, uh, the end result is that we do have a good revenue stream coming in for our ambulance services. And, uh, it cuts our fire department expense, I think, almost in half, would you say?
Yeah, almost.
Yeah, so, just saying that for the public.
Yeah, no, I've actually, um, I talked to a lawyer about this recently, and there's, and he mentioned how, um, you know, some towns have actually taken a more aggressive stance, and, you know, if they, if you actually go after some of these insurance policies, people don't even realize their insurance policy actually might cover the payment for, that, to the town or to the, you know, fire station, so I, I totally agree, that's something we should definitely look into.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not sure what we're doing here as far as that goes, but it was, it was my impression that we bill every insurance company that a patient may have.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but really shouldn't be an issue, except that we do not bill the person.
Yes, which makes sense, I mean, okay, but I think for now, I mean, um, we should definitely bring this up with the chief and talk about this, uh, uh, put on a agenda item for the future.
Sure.
So, but with that, for May, um, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the abatements uh, totaling seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and nine cents, and write-offs totaling three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents for a total of eighty-one thousand, ninety-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, next, moving on, we have the, um, a vote on Police Chief Carolyn Abbott's request to declare, um, three vehicles as surplus. And, um, and allow them to make arrangements to dispose of the vehicles at a class three licensed facility.
Yeah, chance schedule they have in the, in these two vehicles, he has listed, Ford Explorer and, uh, Ford Utility. And then once they have them, just recycle them.
Yeah, I, I read it through, it looks like they've, were, kind of been stripped for parts, and there's not much, you know, value that we can really get out of those.
Yeah, sometimes you can sell, and when I was in Dudley, we used to sell them to the taxicab companies, because they had the police suspension and what have you, these are in great tough shape, so.
Yeah.
But that's always an option.
And then, so, silly question, but, so the, a class three licensed facility, is that like, like a shredder type situation?
Exactly.
Okay. I wanna make sure, yeah. Alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion, um, to approve Police Chief Carolyn Abbott's, um, request to declare the three vehicles, um, surplus and allow them to make arrangements to dispose of those vehicles at a class three licensed facility.
Motion made.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have, um, vote on the Reserve Fund Transfer Request for the Board of Civilicant Administrative Assistant Salary from six thirty, twenty twenty one in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
Uh, just to fill the position that Laura's filling in right now. Cause we had too many staff and personnel changes in that office, so. Trying to get the movie, the money, in different wage scales, so.
Okay.
I believe she, she's making a couple thousand more than the last person who was in that office.
Alright, and that was, like, part of her contract, I'm assuming?
Correct, the board previously approved that.
Motion made to accept. Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 If, if you want, on number fifteen, you can put that, delay it, cause I got a f- couple folks who gave me a couple more suggestions than that, so I wanna update that.
Okay, yeah. I'm good with delaying that till next meeting, or two, two, couple meetings now?
Probably July thirteenth.
Yeah, we'd have, not tomorrow.
Alright, that works for me. Alright, now, Board of Health?
Um, the only thing I had was, uh, update from Laurie Dismaros, but I don't think she's here, so. That's the only thing I had.
There's no real changes since she was here last, and it probably went July.
Okay, yeah, no, she had, I had spoke with her and she, that she would give a, give an update, so. Yeah, if she shows up, then maybe we can circle back to it, but at this point, obviously, she's not here, so.
Okay. So, Personnel Board, George, I, I have a quick question before we get into Personnel Board, just, so, like, the first two are the acknowledgement and resignations.
Yeah.
Are those really resignations if they're moving from like one position to another? It.
Yes, cause they're, they're not promotions per se, at least in here, it's appointing to a new position, so.
It's a, it's like a lateral move, or?
Right, so the way, I had a discussion with the police chief, the way the town has viewed it, not so much as a promotion, it's to a new position, so that's why they resign your point, and we put acknowledgement down, cause once you re- resignation is accepted by the town clerk, it's effective, and you're just acknowledging that you've received those.
Does it mess with their years of?
No, continued service, of no.
And had, so, now we've got a town clerk here, have, have you, have you received the, like, le- those letters of resignation?
I have not.
Cause that's interesting, I'm just trying to think about, it, it's something I never really considered, but I was thinking about it earlier, like how.
Well, I think what you're saying, it's not a resignation, but a transfer.
Yeah, like, it's one, like, I guess, like, you know, I actually got promoted this week in my other job and that, you know? I just think, I know towns obviously work different, so, like, I don't, it's just a.
So if we accept lateral, for some reason, we don't accept lateral, some towns do.
Okay.
Right, but for example, uh, the first one is the equipment operator, if that's a highway department, he's actually, leaving the highway department, he's going to another department. Transfers over the way Free Town is handled, at least, they accept the resignation on that one, and they appoint him to the new position and, um, the new department, same with the, uh, what's the other one? The dispatcher, she's going from a full-time signal operator, but now she's going to a supervisor's position, so they view it different.
I guess I, the only thing I worry about is the union, right, and messing with them, I just don't wanna have.
I don't, no.
Oh, we have Kim raising her hand, and she knows everything, so I'm glad to listen.
Oh, don't say that, uh, I, I kind of have the same concern that you did, Trevor, um, I, I haven't seen this, um, typically as a practice in the past. If someone submits a resignation, it's because they're leaving the employment of the town, and they were changing their position.
Okay.
So, um, I'm not sure if that's something new that.
Nope.
That Chief Abbott.
This is how we've been treating, it's how he's been doing, I asked Abbott the same thing, it's not new, it's how he's done it in the past.
Okay, so he may be doing that, but that doesn't mean that the highway department's been doing that or other departments.
Well, highways, it's, it's.
That's what I said from Tom Clark when I was providing the letter of the board promotion.
Yeah.
Correct.
But the highway's not a promotion, right? It's going from one department to another, it's, he's not staying within the highway department, he's not.
Correct, he's staying within the same union though.
Same union, but has, that's just a union, that's not within the positions.
So why is it not just a transfer? I, I guess I don't understand the resignation case.
I'm just telling them how they've done it, how it's been explained to me, and he's leaving one department, regardless of the union or not, has not, no bearing on it, and he's going to another department, the way Free Town has handled it, they accept the resignation from one department and they appoint him in a new department.
Okay, I just don't see that as being a past practice.
I'm telling them that's what they tell me, and that's what I do.
Can we, uh?
And it's not a past practice, cause it's not a union issue.
Can we review this at a later date?
No, cause these people moved.
No, no, we'll, we'll, no, we'll do this, but I'd like to maybe review.
Yeah.
How we do it, maybe write apologies.
It's, it's, I've, in my other towns, they didn't do it this way, but so, but I did ask.
That's my point.
Alright.
So, whatever we're doing now, if we can review it and maybe change the rules, if that's what. But what does it mean? I'm not worried about, because if they're in the position and it's a pay rate adjustment or whatever, you could always back pay them, right?
Yeah.
You, you could prorate the pay, if we, say, say that this actually took effect by our vote on a week after, or two weeks after their start date of July first, and they were, in that time, made an extra forty dollars, we could back pay them that forty dollars, right? So, I just don't wanna do something that by us saying, oh, yep, they, we accepted their resignation and now. So, I just don't wanna do something that by us saying, oh, yep, they, we accepted their resignation, and now all of a sudden, we ruined their years in the union, because of some silly vote that we made.
I don't know about years in the union, it has no bearing on, to me, but I worry about pension, because that's where they're backing.
But about pension and, and the pension time-
It's critical years of service, hasn't changed, now, it just flows from the town, so that doesn't change. We have positions that are open, we're gonna transfer people on the first. I mean, right now, I, my supervisor and dispatch is definitely moving over on the first, and we have no position right now open, and, well, we have a position open in a transfer station. We're trying to fill that, because that's one of the reasons why we're kind of backed up, they're not getting things done. But this doesn't affect their seniority, and it doesn't affect them within their pension system, and and, like I said, they're not lateral moves, so, lateral moves is within a department, not in different departments.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it just kind of jumped out at me, something interesting.
If you feel strongly about it, we can review it at some later date, like I said.
Yeah.
And maybe change the policy to reflect what your concerns are.
The only ever risk there is, and it's purely political, is that you accept someone's resignation, and then you don't appoint them. That's, and that's a purely political decision of the board, has nothing to do-
But we're involved right now.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would prefer both be done, because those positions need to be filled, I need to move those people, and we have advertising, for example, for the highway going on right now. I think we have interviews gonna start after the thirtieth and what have you, so, I mean, we do this with some sort of a conscious effort to make sure it works right. I mean, if we wanna talk about trying to do things laterally, you know, that's more than wanting to do that, but that's not what we've done up to fast.
Okay, so-
We good with this?
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, it's just acknowledging anyways, we're not voting on, you know, accepting their resignation or anything, so, but yeah, I think it's definitely something we should look into, and-
Well, we, we're also appointing them at the same time.
Yes, yeah.
As of the first.
Right, okay, all right, uh, what I'd like to do is just read through all of these, if you have a problem with one of the line items, just put a hold on it, and we can just do one vote.
That works, right?
Okay, okay, first one, acknowledge the resignation of Margaret A. Dwyer, full time signal operator, effective six three twenty twenty one. Uh, number eighteen, acknowledge the resignation of Thomas Ashley as equipment operator for, effective six thirty twenty twenty one. Approve the appointment of Thomas Ashley as transfer station attendant, effective seven one twenty one through six thirty twenty two, at a rate of twenty five dollars and four cents per hour, for forty hours per week. Approve the appointment of Alfred Sonny Barrows to the building committee as a council on aging representative, effective six twenty one twenty one. Approve appointment of Logan A. St. Louis as a full time signal operator with a pay rate of eighteen dollars and eighty three cents per hour, effective seven one twenty one through six thirty twenty two. Approve appointment Nicole Rodriguez Rios as a full time signal operator with a pay rate of eighteen dollars and eighty three cents per hour, effective seven two twenty twenty one through six thirty twenty two. Approve appointment of Kevin Desmaris to serve on the soil conservation board, effective seven one twenty one through six thirty twenty two. Approve the appointment of Trevor Matthews as chair of the board of power commissioners, effective six twenty one twenty one through six thirty twenty two. Discuss and vote on the approval of the revised dispatch supervisor job description, effective July one twenty twenty one. Discuss and vote on the agreement between town of Free Town and Public Employee Union, Local one one four four, Free Town Highway Department of the Laborist, International Union of North America, AFL-CI. Do you have more? Two more. Discuss and vote, rolling over two hundred and twenty eight point five unused six hours into next fiscal year for Kimberly Fales. Next one is discussion and vote on wage increase for public health nurse.
I'll, I'll just hold the last one.
Okay, okay, so, does someone wanna make a motion for item seventeen through twenty seven?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And, uh, do you wanna discuss, uh, number twenty eighth?
Can we read twenty eighth again?
Discuss and vote on wage increase for public health nurse.
Yeah, so, we, I know that you guys met with public health nurse, and there was, this is some discussion, and, um, it was, what I was led to believe, last time at least, that we, we voted that, you know, that Lori agreed to, to, it was a thirty five doll, thirty six, five dollars?
She said thirty five, one thirty seven.
She said thirty, thirty, the one dollar increase. Um, so I know that she's been with the town for five years, and, you know, there was never a wage increase once. Um, through some conversations, I, I think that, you know, we'd be better off going to something like thirty eight dollars an hour. And I, and I did talk to Kim about this, and we have money in the budget for it, you know, I just think that she's done a great job, we wanna keep her around. Um, the cost of trying to find someone else to fill that role, if we can find somebody to fill that role, I think it would be much more expensive for the town, so, um, that's just where I stay on this. So, we, you were out last meeting, so we decided to hold this and come back to it now.
Okay, I have no objection to that, uh, the only comment I would make is that we met with her, and she agreed to the rate that we gave her at that particular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's just-
I don't know, maybe she was nervous, or, and then what, but I know that, you know, she wasn't thrilled with the new rate, so, uh, to Trevor's point, I mean, based on the wages I'm looking at from other towns, there's still towns that are paying well above that thirty eight dollars, and after six years of service, if you haven't given anyone a raise, I know percentage wise, it can be higher, but, um, I still think she falls within that range, we're not giving her any added benefits, you know, Trevor's saying that, you know, they are, um, you know, that, that, I'm sorry, I just lost my completely train of thought, Trevor was saying that, uh, Kim stated that, that the money was in the funding for it, so, you know, and now, she's still, I, I understand COVID is winding down, but it's still here, she's still tracking it, she still has more tracking it. It kicks back up in the fall, it's only gonna get worse again on her, so, I think that, you know, we a hundred percent, um, I am completely aligned with thirty eight dollars an hour, I, I don't see any issue with that.
To ask Kim exactly what line item she plans to use in the money from the front.
From the reserve, that's set aside for everybody else that's gonna get an increase, that would be voted at town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's ten hours a week, right?
Right.
It's, you know?
Thirty dollars, what we-
Just asking, I just wanna make sure, I knew where it was coming from.
Yeah.
I think thirty dollars to make someone happy, and to Trevor's point, good luck replacing someone-
Yeah.
That is, has that institutional knowledge of, is all worth it.
I have no objection to it personally, it's just that she was agreeable to the rate that we had discussed, but it was a little surprise.
And part of it's just process, right, so, we talked at town meeting, because we had a number of folks ask for raises, and we said we weren't doing raises, we were doing two percent across the board, the one dollar we gave her, it's about the two percent, and in the fall, once you get free cash, even though we're financially a sound town, but go through those steps with everybody else, so. I, for me, it's more of an equity issue and a process issue, because we've told different folks that that's how we were gonna do it, and I will be doing a one off, whether it's off by a year or five, isn't different to that, right, so, but that, for me, it's more, I'm not denying it at thirty eight, I'm just saying, I wanna do that, but if we're gonna do processes, we fear to everybody else, and that's kind of what we do for, so.
No, I hear you.
So.
Yeah.
I hate, but this is a little bit different than the fact that every one of those other folks has received a raise in the past six years, so.
All right, so I guess with that, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve a wage increase, um, of three dollars to thirty eight dollars an hour for a public health nurse.
Motion made.
I guess I'll second that.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Did we vote on the whole block?
I think we got them all done.
All done?
All done, okay.
All right. So, now, moving on?
You can go back if you want, do the public nurse presentation, if you want.
Yes.
Do you want me to go up there?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
Yeah.
I guess I can move up a little bit.
It's just the microphone, she's gonna hear her presentation, or update.
Can I just move up to, press it right here?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I think, I think these microphones, you got, take that up.
They don't pick you up all back there, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, it's nice to be in person.
I love it, well, don't ask.
I know, this is great, we thought this day would never come. Uh, so just to give a quick update, COVID cases, uh, for Free Town, there's been a total of nine hundred and ninety three since the beginning in the last two weeks, obviously, COVID has been decreasing in cases, there's been nine cases over the last fourteen day period with a two point seven nine positivity rate, there's currently two cases that are still current. So, um, so obviously, the cases are coming down, and, um, you know, we're in line with the rest of Massachusetts, and, you know, with vaccination rates going up, it, it definitely is helping, and so we are seeing that decrease.
On the, you have two cases right now?
Correct, yes.
Have they just, age range, just give-
Yes, I can give you, I can actually go over the, um, so from the month of June, so, June first to June twenty second, we've had seven cases. There's been two cases under the age of twelve, three cases from that sixteen to nineteen age range, one from thirty to forty nine, and then one from fifty to sixty four.
I just don't see the, the younger ages get vaccinated.
Correct, yes.
So, we expect that to go down.
Yep, but hopefully, the numbers will come down, so, I also, um, in this report here, I have, um, vaccination rates, so, the most vulnerable population, the one we were most concerned with through, um, through COVID and everything like that, for Free Town, uh, for seventy five plus, we're, um, we're at greater than ninety five percent.
Wow.
So, um-
That's awesome.
Amazing.
Yeah, so-
They did a good home bound, or in the fire chief, I think that worked.
Yep, uh, myself in the fire department, we got those patients who were home bound and wasn't able to go out to get vaccinations, that worked really well. We also, um, you know, unfortunately, the town, the state didn't allow us to do regular vaccination clinics, which we had hoped to do, um, but at least we were able to get that population, we also, I worked with, um, superintendent schools and the school nurses, we were able to hold, um, sponsored through the state, both clinics over at the Free Town Elementary School, they got their second doses last week, we did about ninety four students. So, um, that was also something that we were able to, even though it's available kind of everywhere nowadays, which is great, we were able to also, um, do that. We do have some limited, um, Johnson and Johnson vaccine, so I was thinking of maybe putting that out there. So, if there's anyone, we can, I could probably do something either at COA or at the fire department, um, I know it's available everywhere, but we do have a few more doses in town, so if anyone has difficulty kind of getting out, we can offer that.
It's probably better to reach, talk to other place, because I know there's some seniors who have been reserved about getting the, and if it's a one shot deal, they might be more.
Right, it's hard, you know, um, you know, weighing all of it, some people, um-
Do we know of the number of cases that you had, how many were hospitalized?
So, I don't think I pulled that report this time for the hospitalizations, but I can get it for you.
That's all right.
Uh, as of this month, you know, just the seven cases in June, we did have one that was hospitalized. Um, kind of surprising, it was actually a younger person, it was the, the person from the thirty to forty nine year old. They're doing well, they were in the hospital for a couple of days, um, ended up getting the Rindemzivir, so, um-
From no intensive care?
No.
I, I keep hearing about like these, like, variants, and has there, has there any, has there been any kind of variant outbreaks in Massachusetts? Like, I keep hearing the Delta variant, which I don't really know exactly.
Right, so there are variants, um, as far as all those variants here in Free Town, they don't, what they call sequence, they don't sequence all the specimens, and usually, it takes about two to three weeks to see if the sequencing even, um, is done on, on the specimens. So, that we don't always get right away, um, I can try running a report and see, but last time I ran a report for specimens in Free Town, I think we might have only had one or two cases that might have been a variant.
Okay.
So, it's kind of hard to say, yeah.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
And that's, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that something that's quite normal with disease, right, with this stuff, right, where variants? Because I think a lot of people get nervous, so I just, I kind of already knew the answer, but wanted to bring it up, because I didn't want someone watching this meeting to get scared that this is a variant that could be in Free Town, and, but it's quite normal with progression, right?
Right, and that's why they recommend, you know, there are obviously a lot of people that have had COVID, so, they, that's why they're recommending the vaccine, because the vaccine kind of helps with the variants and things like that, so that's kind of the recommendation.
Are we expecting a spike in the fall?
So, it's kind of hard to say, um, if it follows the, the path that flu normally does, flu always kind of comes down in the summertime, and then peaks back up in the fall, so they are kind of, um, looking at that, that it potentially could, um, you know, peak back up in the fall.
People sanitizing stuff, if we didn't have any flu, we'd either share it with a mask and stuff, if we continue that practice, if we see a spike, finish it.
Right, you obviously wanna take those measures, right, and washing, masks, distancing, um, so those obviously were the recommendations again for the fall. I don't think there's anything else, um, so that's as far as COVID, so, they are, um, obviously, the younger people are starting to get vaccinated, the twelve to fifteen year old, which is the newer group that had, the last group that had been eligible, they're, they're at twenty eight percent for receiving their first dose, and twelve percent for fully vaccinated, so, there are, that age group is getting out there, and they're starting to get vaccinated. And obviously, as we're getting into the warmer weather, the other thing is mosquitoes, we obviously had a death here in Free Town, um, in two thousand nineteen from AAA. So, I know, and had said they put it up on the, um, Free Town website, Bristle County mosquito, um, program, they do offer the spraying here in town. It is unlimited, um, they come on a weekly basis, and it obviously, there's a few things that are dependent, um, you know, the temperature has to be above fifty five, can't be raining, um, but Free Town's day is Tuesdays, so they actually come between two AM on Tuesday to sunrise, and they do the truck spraying, so anyone who would like to get sprayed, they can, um, call the number that's on the mass.gov website, call the Board of Health, we can get them that information, they do have to call on a weekly basis. You can't just say, you know, spray my, you know, spray, um, every week for the whole season, you do have to call every week, but they did say there's no limit. In Plymouth County, there's a limit of eight sprays, but in Bristol County, there is no limit, so they can call. The other thing they told me was, if you're having an event at your house, you have to call two to three weeks in advance, um, but what that will do is, they'll actually come out on the Friday before your event, on the weekend, so that way, that'll, that's also another thing that they offer.
Wow, that's great to know.
Yeah, so they said that's also something, um, so just kind of something to have out there, so that people can also do that. They, you can, uh, request a spraying either by calling, faxing, or emailing, you just give your name, last name, full address, zip code, and then the other thing that, um, the next time I come, I'll have more information to, obviously, tick borne diseases is a big problem here in Free Town.
I heard ticks are up this year.
Yes, ticks up this year, I've already gotten, I don't have the number, she was with me for the, um, tick borne disease, but I've already gotten anaplasmosis and babesiosis, which are the big ones for tick borne disease, so that's also something, um-
Is it just the weather, water, or rain?
So, mosquito is more dependent on rain, so they did, so, with the mosquitoes and AAA, those come in cycles, so this is our third year, they usually say they come in threes, this is the third year for that, they're hoping with the drier fall and into the spring, it might help with the mosquitoes and help those numbers to stay down. As far as ticks, it does peak more in your summer months, and that's where people are outside, but actually, ticks are around year round. So, even the winter, you potentially could, um, get a tick bite, but if you're seeing a lot of deer in your yard, um, you know, things like that- You know, things like that, um, then you're at increased risk.
I have, I have a friend who's been my tick-borne ten years, and she has Lyme disease for like, ever, she makes it fatigue and aches and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, so important, yeah, obviously, people are outside this time of year, um, anytime of year, but just making sure that you're checking when you come in. Um, and anyone who has that I follow, I just kinda, just go over some of the preventative measures and things like that.
Tough to kill.
Few years ago, they did some aerial sprays, I don't remember exactly when, and things were really bad.
For mosquitoes.
For mosquitoes, yes.
Yeah, they don't do that particular, no.
Correct, no, so as far as, um, mosquitoes, as of last Monday, June fourteenth. The state has started their testing for the mosquitoes, they have their traps up there, so soon we'll be getting the reports as far as, um, the numbers and whether or not they're. Um, carrying any of the triple E or West Nile virus. So what the state does is, they start seeing that there's certain areas or, um, they're testing positive, that's when they'll do the aerial spraying, but it's not part of, um, preventative.
But it's on demand, more or less.
Yeah, they look at the numbers and they're seeing if they're, like, you know, depending on when we had the triple E and that case, they were spraying Freetown in certain areas. So when they see the numbers go up, then that's when they kinda focus on their aerial spraying.
It's a lot of what ends here, you know, when you get to Forests.
Yeah.
Yep. So I think that's it, unless you guys have any questions?
I don't, but Laura, thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Alright, how great. Alright. So moving on, so now, um, Board of Park Commissioners.
So the, uh, the good news is, when there is not an official Board of Park Commissioners, it falls on a planning board if they've been designated, which they have not been here. It then falls on to the Board of Selectmen, which is kinda better right now for us. Um, only because we're looking at the boat ramp and the beaches, which is, which is under your purview.
Yep.
Um, trying to put some rules, I mean, we've had discussions with the officers and about how to enforce some stuff, and if we have our own attendants down there, so. Uh, it's better to have a, a more robust rules and regulations for the town beach, so presenting that to you today.
Yep. So I looked, I looked through it.
So the only comment I got, I didn't change, is I do have it open to all Massachusetts residents. Some people wanna re- uh, restrict it to just town residents. Um, I haven't talked to town attorney about that so far, I know the boat ramp, it's different, 'cause it's state-owned, that's open to all residents, and to be honest, all the state residents. Um, we don't have to do that, but, um, I just have it open to all res- uh, residents in Massachusetts.
So you need a, you do need a pass to go to the beach?
The problem we have here, and it's, um, we sell one sticker, transfer station, beach, what else does it go to?
Um, Hathaway Park and the Van Sand.
And the Van Sand, so the thought was, we couldn't really stop partway through the year and issue stickers, 'cause people already bought them, so. Our plan is after the season, uh, make a proposal, uh, have discussion about with the police chief and Luann about two sticker programs. One basically for the transfer station, and then have a Pox and Rock one a century for all of Park Row.
Yep.
So, that's how we're kind of looking at it now.
I agree, but that, that beach, you know, with all the issues that we've had with it, I don't think that this is something that we should be opening up to everyone. It's a, it's a small beach, I think it's best fitted for just the town.
However, the board wants to, I was a little reserved on that, 'cause I have a question on Tomar, I haven't heard back from him yet. Uh, so I wanna make sure that, my understanding, 'cause I've been to other town beaches, and I've been to state, and they were restricted. I just wanna make sure I'm firmly for ground to do that, and I just.
I spoke with the police chief, uh, not the police chief, I'm sorry, I spoke to someone within the police department about this issue, and basically, a lot of what the issue is happening is. People putting in at the boat ramp, and then they're picking people up from the, from the town beach. And shuttling them off, right, they're taking them on rides on jet skis, they're coming back over. Um, and the police only have so much authority once the violation happens over the water. So if we have something that we can control what's on the land through the police department, the people we have working there.
This is a step in the direction.
This is what we have to do, I think we just, we say it's just town residents only.
So that's the first step in that direction, it's a civil violation, is what you're talking about. And we put that in there, you already have it built in to the, uh, bylaws as it is now. It's just like, for example, um, I had forgotten it, she'll actually point it out, no fires, right? So, now we have, before the officer's gonna go down and say, you know, put up your fires or whatever, now, we're gonna memorialize it, they'll have that to go with. Um, the jet skis, we had, uh, they go around, we have some areas there now, and they go around. Um, I wanna put another cement, but it doesn't really work, because then we can't get the mower down there. Thinking not the breakaway poles, but the lock poles in there, it costs a little bit of money, so. At one time, we talked about putting a fence, but then do we wanna have a fortress mentality? But, uh, I just wanna be able to give the police or any designate the board wants, they can, you can put an attendant down there. And we have one guy going over there for a couple hours a week, and you can say, enforce a rule, that's to your designation.
I, I like the idea of having someone there, the police, listen, if the police are there dealing with something that's small, and meanwhile. Someone, there's a major car accident, something, something that the police need to attend to. I don't want them there, sitting there patrolling these small things, so I think the idea of having someone there is a great tool. But I also wanna make sure that we have town bylaws in place that allow the police to go down there and do their job to.
Right.
Keep the, the parties away from there that we don't want there, that, that are creating the issue.
This is what we're trying to do, we're doing that now.
But I guess, but, but with, I'm just worried about saying we're opening up to, you know, someone who lives on the western side of the state, they can come over and get a sticker. And go there, I want this to be our town treasure, right, let's keep it for just our townspeople. I, I just.
Like I said, I'm indifferent either way that goes, I just wanna have the authority, I, I'm gonna be a little bit different than you on the police, I think that's part of the job, that's what we pay them to do. Well, we're fortunate, we're not living in Roxbury, right, or Watts, where, you know, so our officers can spend some time, but. I, but you can also appoint the attendant to say, enforce those rules if we do that, I can't afford someone down here full-time, we, we just.
No, no.
Uh, uh, right, but we do wanna be able to appoint our boat camp, uh, boat ramp attendants, 'cause one of them does go back and forth down there. And we wanna make sure we have footing for the police to go down there, and to, if someone's having a large party, some drinking, you know, all that, the normal stuff, they can straighten that out. This is a step in the right direction in that way, but I'm fine, if you, if you wanna restrict it to, to residents only, I'm fine with that. I just wanna.
See, that's, that's my biggest thing with it, and, and speaking, I don't wanna call any particular NMO, but with the police officer I spoke with, I think. He was very encouraged at the fact that we're willing to, we're trying to do something, right, to put more faces there, and I think repetition, repetition is key. And having people there that, you know, someone knows, like, alright, now this isn't the easy place to go to pick up my friends, to bring them out on their jet ski or their boats and.
For us, we have groups that go down there, right, uh, they bring a bus, bus goes down, drops off a bunch of people, takes off, and the bus come back, three hours and picks them up, right? So, we would prevent that, the only way they can be able to do that is to come into the board and ask them for permission, so instead of a bus driving down, dropping off forty kids with two adults and taking. Off to wherever they go, if we see that, we can say, you can't do that anymore, right, you have to go and get permission from the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen can say. 'Cause the beach, I mean, of all the beaches I've ever met, this is probably the smallest one. And we have no amenities, we have the two quarter parties, and that's it, we don't have picnic, we have nothing, so it's very, um. So we do wanna make those improvements over time, but we do need to get a handle on the jet skis, for example. Um, and a variety of, and the big groups that are dropping off everybody off down there, so. Now, if it's a Tuesday at ten AM, it's not so much, it's when they hit Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, it gets more difficult.
So if we were, so sh- I'd like to figure out if we can, you know, legally restrict it to resident, town residents only, right, so should we hold off on this?
Well, I need, I like, I like to get some rules, you can always amend this, right? So I'd rather, if that's the only thing we have in here, I would pass it, right, it's still open, and I can come back in a week, and go to a meet on the twenty-eighth. Right, I can't do it tomorrow, and I'll have discussion with Mark by then, he'll say, yeah, that's legal or not, and you'll just amend that to be resident only, that's even better. But I need, we need.
And it will, it will a hundred percent be able to be amended and not cause us any headaches?
Yeah, you, you as Board of Commissioners can just use rules at, at your limit at any time, right? Post them, people have noticed, then you can change it and stuff, right? 'Cause right now, we have, I think, the sign down there from twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, that has six things on it.
Sure.
I just have a quick question, so this is in regards to a policy, correct, not a bylaw change, correct?
It's not a bylaw.
Okay, so do the police have any, uh, way that they could take it or cite? Folks who are not following the policy? Cause it's my understanding that they can only take it, cite in a bylaw violation, not necessarily a policy.
Right, so we have a bylaw, under right, it's on page one eighteen, it's recreational facilities, it talks about the civil violation, I've just, in this policy, it just repeats that again. So even a bylaw, they have the authority to go down there, first a fence for twenty-five bucks, second fence fifty dollars, third fence, I forget what it is. So you have that already in there, the problem we have is, we send someone down there, and we have a sign from how long ago, it says, and like I said, even I missed the no fires, right? So now they can say, well, these are the rules and regs passed by the duly authorized board, right? And they can enforce them, and now they can issue the fines on them, right, there's a variety of things. So right now, someone could have a dog down there, and you can't violate, you can't give them a citation, 'cause we don't have any rules or regulations. Now, I'm indifferent to dogs, but some people don't want dogs down there, right, other than service dogs, right, or fires, or drinking. Um, I think drinking's maybe the exception, because you can't drink in public and all that kind of stuff. But I need those rules and regs, so we can start enforcing that, getting it down there, and I was thinking about doing a bylaw, but it's like digging holes in the sand and figuring, that's not really a bylaw thing, that's a rules and regulation thing. But we do have that authority under the bylaws right now on recreational facilities, for them to issue, uh, civil violations. They, they just need something that issued say, yeah, this has been duly authorized and approved by the board, Board of Park Commissioners, and do it.
So we handed out those rules and regs?
Yep.
And they, anytime they're on the purchase, either a non-resident or resident sticker?
Right.
But will those rules and regulations be posted at the beach?
Yeah, well, they haven't been approved, that, so, yes.
Well, if, would they?
My goal is to post, have them in your office, town hall, and post them at the beach, right? Uh, they don't affect the boat ramp or Hathaway Park or anything like that, I mean, they could adopt that, not so much the boat ramp, but the other places, but right now, if we have a problem area, and it's busy, it's the beach, so I'm just trying to.
Right, and so if I get it on our end, and I think we've had this discussion before, where, you know, it's mostly out of town.
It is.
Folks that are coming in, you know, utilize the beach or buy stickers on the beach, where you're the town residents.
Yeah.
Kinda basically say it's gone by the wayside and it's.
They either don't, they don't go, 'cause they get frustrated, and there is the boss, it comes out of one of the southern cities here, and comes in and drops off a bunch of folks, and which is fine and stuff, but. They should really have permission to do that, 'cause all of a sudden, you're dropping off thirty to forty kids and, and two adults, it really impacts down there a lot, so. So if we wanna do that, that's somebody, I think they're thirties within the board to decide how they wanna do that, you know? I, I, I'm not opposed to, 'cause it's such a teeny, teeny beach, make it regen only, it's not a bad, you know?
I can tell you that if you go to the Bedford, try to use any of their beaches, you can't park anywhere else.
Yeah.
And it'll be a fifty-dollar sign, if you do park, so.
Right. Right. Well, for, for, technically, right now, we have a sticker policy, right, shouldn't, if you could have a sticker to be there, no one's enforcing it, you know, I, we have a bylaw, so. But I'm hoping updating these rules and regs will have less, uh, resistance by folks to go and start enforcing some of the stuff. You know, I, I'm not saying be authoritarian, I think it's a breaking period, let people know, you can't be here, you can't do that, you know, that sort of stuff. And the police chief knows that, and his officers obviously know that, but we need to start taking some of the steps if you wanna. We're starting to put some time and effort, we've done some trimming, Chuck done a good job on the, on the, putting some parking areas down there, we're starting to take care of Luann, and, uh. Laura, I've been working a lot on getting stuff done, so we're starting to make those steps, you know, so.
I mean, I know for sure, like, I, from personal experience, there's a beach in Little Compton that I went to go to one time recently, and I was told no, because I wasn't resident, so.
Really?
So, so it's definitely possible, and that was in Rhode Island, but, so, it's a different states, I'm not sure if the rules are different, but, you know.
It's like, in some states, the coastline is open to everybody, in some states, it is not. In New Hampshire, it's open to everybody, because it's only eighteen quarter miles, you know, Massachusetts, I don't believe that works that way.
Try to park in Westport.
Well, yeah.
I was like, Westport's awful.
Yeah, so it's just.
Yeah.
Not being resident and get it up.
Yep.
Right, and in Maine, to be honest with you, when I manage up there, you could walk through so much property, you know, I mix a house, to go do the, the waterway, if you wanted to, if they had even more. But it's just different states have different rules, how they regard their public waterways, that's all.
Gotcha. Alright, so I guess, so now knowing that we can make amendments here, and, uh, you know, I definitely do some more research on that, figure out if we can restrict it just to town residents. Um, but in the meantime, so all entertain a motion to, um, approve the rules and regulations for the town beach.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That's Conservation, Porta Pastor, he was asking about, that's Conservation Commission, they oversee that, so I would talk to Kevin, ask on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause remember I called last week?
Yeah.
Well, they cut down the, and after I talked to you, somebody put the chains back up, I don't know, I think we reached out to them, like.
Conservation came by and said, asked us if we put a chain and a lock on it, they did not.
I think so.
Right.
I think someone illegally cut it, I think that's what happened.
Somebody put it back up, I assumed it was Conservation, but it was cut down again a couple of days later.
They, they wanna go crabbing or whatever.
It wasn't Kevin who put up, it wasn't Conservation who put a lock, and they were going around asking each department, saying, did you happen to put up a lock here? They asked us, and I said, no, and then they went and cut it, and they were like, nobody put it up, so.
So we have.
Conservation cut?
Yeah, 'cause he, he went around and asked each department to say, you know, did you put a lock up there, and we were all like, no, so we don't know who put the lock up.
Oh, oh, I know.
A vigilante lock?
I guess so.
So he took it down.
Well, we don't, we don't do anything with Conservation, man, to be honest with you, so.
Okay, alright, well, anything else, uh, any old business wanna talk about here? I don't think we have anything new on the council on aging, I think.
I think, don't we have, uh, maybe coming in to talk about the conservation department, did he come up?
Yeah. He's coming to the council on aging tomorrow to meet with you, and then he's coming on, I, I think it's, it's either the twelfth or the thirteenth of July, he's coming to our meetings.
Yeah. To meet, to meet with you folks.
Okay, alright, with that, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you, everybody.